It is our, obviously our, the bill. It did come to the committee, the safety committee, or perhaps, perhaps the front of us on the council floor. I'll give a quick overview and, you know, a lot of folks have stuck with us tonight, are here, you know, and they've got some, brought some, now opened their windows, and heated to us. And I bring this bill forward for consideration of the council because we have a lot of work to do in the city. We have a lot of work when it comes to making sure that our safety departments are departments that have full loads of support. In order to do that, we have to make sure that we're doing our job, making sure that we see issues arise that may not only have attention to the issue, but be privy to those issues. This ordinance, however, does identify some issues. One of the issues that I thought was on council was that, well, potentially was the fact that information in cooperation, information was not being shared with our independent monitor. This is information that our independent monitor needs to do his job. In 2010, and this has been in various instances where he unfortunately has to counter these problems, these obstacles. And that obstacle has been around city agencies. You know, the independent monitor's office was something that created an independent monitor, somebody that can conduct independent review, investigation, and also make recommendations on how to implement best practices, make sure that we are finding errors that we can correct, but also prevent some of these things from happening. In 2006, the independent monitor's office was created due to such attacks. Unfortunately, in 2010, we had the independent monitor in front of us, well, recently, talking about these issues. In 2010, we discovered that there had been a memo that had circulated through the sheriff's department. And this memo said essentially that if there are any grievances, if there are any complaints to the IAB, anything else, make sure they come through top brass first. And, you know, and then it was all through. That is not good practice. And the office of the independent monitor was made privy to this information, this memo, and it asked for that information, for that memo. You know, according to our independent monitor, the department told him that it was unable to confirm the existence of the memo. Yet, we just got out of Denver Post, Denver Post issued a court, and was able to obtain that one in 2015. After months since the office of the independent monitor had asked for this information, you know, that was embarrassing. I think the people of Denver expected that our agency, especially our safety departments and cooperative, had to pass the expectation. Saw this coming from the committee, I think a lot of us were shocked. So what we did is we worked with the office of the independent monitor, worked with the mayor's administration, and, you know, raised community members, community groups, focused on this council, to look at some possible remedies to make sure that this does not happen again. We need to be able to make sure that the independent monitor has the tools necessary to do his job. So in addressing this issue, I also want to put out a statement for the record that the majority of folks, whether it's the department, police department, or even the sheriff's department, wear that badge, the majority of folks that are out there do their job in a very dignified, a lot of them do. It's because of the actions of the few that we get a bad rap for doing. I want to make sure that this ordinance speaks to me. Want to make sure that there's public confidence, that there's public trust. Because in order for us to have a safe city, not the same for us to feel like we have a safe city, without any public safety, there has to be community trust. In order for us to have a time, we should not have to feel timid in reporting. We should be able to have a community trust. This undermined that community trust, and undermined the great work that so many people are in uniform, most departments perform every day. Here's what they do. By being Councilman 67, you have the language. Councilman 67 accomplishes three, three major things. The first are, the first one is compliance. When the independent monitor asks for certain investigatory documentation, access to information in order to perform his job, we have to make sure that the independent monitor has compliance with that request. So far, it's demonstrated that there's been issues with them. So we require that compliance. Second, that it does, that this communication, communication happened in time. Don't expect the community, I mean, don't expect, sorry, the independent monitor has to wait months at hand just to receive information as requested. Not seven months, not six, not three, or a reasonable turn, a reasonable timeframe. Third, is that we realize that there's documents out there that are protected, there's files that are protected because of attorney-client privilege, or attorney work product, or things that are pre-empted in federal, state, or local laws. We understand to be made clear of this. That last amendment requires that if there's any sense of information, that has a written explanation as to why those documents cannot be released, be provided in a time of, to where it may not be released. Now, we need to be able to, and I think that citizens of Denver respect us, making sure that the public safety is current. And we are working together, that we are working together. Doesn't matter what kind of badge you have on, doesn't matter if you're working together to ensure that public trust and public safety, not withhold information that's necessary. That's basically all we have to do with the ordinance. I know that there will be questions. I want to make sure that folks in the Republican general community that waited so long tonight. Sorry, I'm going to have a cafeteria in the building if we're having this to have an opportunity to speak to the council president, but I think the council president will go away, and I want to make sure that we do that as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Secretary, we have thirty-four speakers. Okay. Thank you all for staying here with us. What I'm going to do is I'm going to call the first five speakers, and we'll bring them up to the front of the bench, and that will help us speed up our proceedings. So our first speaker is Ann Elizabeth Terrence Hughes, Steve Chavez, Julie Gonzalez. Just wanted to show you here, and this is about one hour, okay? So if there is comments that have already been made, and you feel that that was stated enough to your satisfaction, I would encourage you to just say that's enough. Steve, so we're talking about maybe a lot of other things. Okay, thanks, just a short one.
Ann Elizabeth Rodo. I want to first of all thank the council for all looking so hard, almost all of you who are here, which are our speakers. It's a valid effort, I really, everybody who's here, I think it's awesome that people are speaking, because this is very important. I want to speak in support of this. In Greenville, we're working, we're working very hard on police relations, and I support this not just because of the work that still needs to be done, but because of just support of progress that has been made. Everybody that has a long history with any, an enforcement department knows that there's serious problems in many areas that have to be resolved by transparency, courageous honesty, looking at issues that include things like institutional racism, bigotry, and bias. These are very important issues that we have to look at, you know, ourselves from the other side, on matters of how are we as citizens responding from within our experiences, expectations on us, and needs to be addressed. I think transparency, disclosures, face-to-face conversations, the empowerment of independent, the independent monitors in a respectful environment is immensely important, and is going to be a saving grace for Denver in the context of all these other wonderful things that are being done, which are part of the solution too, which have to do with redeeming the economy of the city, bringing the neighborhoods that have been neglected into the arena of full engagement with all of the wonderful things people should have in life and in their environments. And this is an extremely important part of carrying the city across the threshold of setting a precedent for an immensely cooperative depth in all of our agencies and departments. So I really appreciate this being put forward now as a problem to be resolved within the language of the ordinance, and I strongly ask the council to support it and to move forward and participate with everyone that will be bringing forth the fruits of this exchange and the opening of the files, the hearts, the minds, and the efforts of people from many, many directions in complicated problems. So that has my support. Thanks.
My next speaker is Terrence Hughes.
Hey, Terrence Hughes, we really appreciate your lights. First of all, to just begin with, just a little recap of things that just kind of happened recently in our city. We had a lot of brownies, we had a lot of different other alcohol things going on, and we had, some people may, may color some things as big negative, so we'll say positive. I would say some have nothing to do with this hearing tonight. This hearing tonight really is about, are we going to give strength to the office of the independent monitor for which that position was originally created? That office is supposed to have an investigative tool for which it can operate independently. Without having that, then you pretty much just have an advisory board, and that's not what the people had asked for when we first asked for the creation of this office. I think that when we look at organizations such as mine and other organizations in the city, the Minister Elias, the NAACP, the Latino Forum, we've all been called in to be a part of the solution. And so we donate time, we do things, we donate time, and be a part of the solution. And the solution tonight is, we have to take a stand, and we're asking you, council members, to take a stand to support and strengthen this office. We take a stand by being collective in our input, but we're asking you to now take a stand and also strengthen this office. If we want to stop some of the things that we have out there, then we have to have confidence. The community has to have confidence. And right now, the community doesn't have confidence because we find out about cases that are going on two and three years after they actually had started. So those delays are because the investigator tool has been lacking, lacking, and so it drags things out. And so the community, when we finally find out about different kinds of pieces and different kinds of situations, we start to have more mistrust. We don't understand why it's taking so long to bring justice to individuals who are supposed to be working on our behalf. And so when we look at this, we have to have that, what do we really want to do? Do we want to just keep things to status quo? Are we really comfortable with where this independent monitor's office is at? The community has spoken out and said, no. We have a lot more people here that hadn't gone home, that must know what life is made going to be right now, but I'll take the heat from her to stand here to testify the importance of this measure. The importance of this to our community, if they got the votes, we're able to stay. And this is not an anti-police situation. This is not anti-police. As a matter of fact, this is pro-police, because what happens is, once that they have some of these things in place, that they have support on their force, and they have support by the community. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Steve Chavez. Our next speaker is Mark Medrick.
Hi, I'm Medrick, I'm twenty-seven. I was born in the Westwood community, raised in Barnum, and I'm about thirty also, so I've, you know, I'm born and raised in Denver. I have donated several years of my time to the police activity as a football and a baseball coach. In the community, the people that really know me, I am a respected member of the community. I, growing up, I have had several run-ins with the cops in the community. Growing up in the nineties, I heard a lot of negative influences toward the cops that I did not agree with growing up. I really did learn about the cops growing up. For, I was taught that they were here to protect and serve us, the people, and our rights. After a few run-ins with the cops, I learned very quickly that they're not here to protect us, and the, and all the way they intimidated me and made me believe that I had no rights as a citizen. They painted me as criminal and as a thug, and they have taken advantage of this situation in a lot of different ways. They have scarred my face while I was in handcuffs. They dropped me on my face, pulled me out of their cars in handcuffs, and lifted me till I found my face a couple times, and after I got up, I've gotten to jail a couple times with money missing from my wallet. I've gotten to jail with all the items from my wallet thrown away, my social security card, my ID, all the, all the business cards that I had, food over time, and they've gone all that away. They've taken a video game out of my car, and, and the community where I grew up, I was taught, well, when I became a teenager and I started to realize this and speak out about this, I was told by the Hispanic community that I looked up to, that it was part of growing up in this community. You have to learn to deal with the cops, because I fit their profile based on how I cut my hair, based on how I walk, based on all the stuff that has nothing to do with how I am and what I represent in the community. I'm in support of this bill, so hopefully at least feel that we are taking some steps to hold police accountable for their actions, and... That's all, I'm in support of the bill, and I hope things do change.
Thank you. Okay, so here, here, I want to thank you with, with all the speakers. It's time you break into an applause and make comments, taking time away from the other people that want to speak, and so if you could, please, if I'm doing that...
Let's hear them speak then, let's hear them speak.
Okay, but there are all the people here that want to speak, and so if you could just let them speak, that would be really good. Maybe you'll have your time, and so let's go forward, Mr. Gonzalez.
Hi there, good evening. My name is Jill Gonzalez, and I am a member of the Colorado Latino Forum, Denver chapter, and I also serve with other organizations statewide, chair. I'm here tonight to, you know, to be here in support of the proposed ordinance to strengthen the office of the independent monitor. Our community, in this time, we're reeling from the pain and the affliction on our community. We're mourning the losses of Ryan Uronquillo, of Jesse Hernandez, and of so many other people who have made the media and those who have not made the media, but who have suffered brutality at the hands of the few law enforcement officials who have gone beyond the order to protect and serve. The position of the Colorado Latino Forum is that only through transparency will we be able to regain trust, and that trust is so fundamentally broken right now, unfortunately, here in the city of Denver. And so for that reason, we stand here in full support of the proposed ordinance to strengthen the office of the independent monitor. We believe that there is still tremendous work to be done to reform the Denver Police Department, the Denver Sheriff's Department, and the District Attorney's Office, but that this, this mechanism of ensuring that the public does have transparency and accountability is incredibly important. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez, for coming now. Our next round of five speakers, if you can come up, and I call your names, Amy Cofone, Darren O'Connor, Robert Bobbey, Sylvia Gonzalez, and Christopher Shado. Amy, I'm ready. She's live, okay. Darren O'Connor.
Hello, city council members, my name is Darren O'Connor. I'm here, let's say, recently, a little older, who's quite active in Denver. I believe that nothing we're going to say tonight is going to probably change your minds, I think, that you'll probably do the right thing, because this is clearly the right thing to do, to pass this ordinance. I think it's the beginning of a number of steps the city of Denver needs to take in order to address what keeps happening, and what keeps happening is we have people of color dying with no, seemingly no repercussions, except that their family has possibly loved one. I want to share with you something that's been done in another city, Richmond, California, which is very near Antioch, California, where I was born. In Antioch, since 2007, there have been seven people killed by the police, but in Richmond, in those years, there have been zero, and they're very nearby, they're near Oakland, it's a dangerous area, a lot of crime happens. And yet, why has that changed? That has changed because one man, the chief of police, Chris Magnus, has required training for the officers. They go through four trainings a year in role-playing, with people acting out, coming at them violently with weapons, and the police learn to do non-lethal response to these attacks, and pulling a gun and using it is the last thing they should do. And the chief there, Magnus, has said, every bullet has your name on it to the police, and we will investigate every time an excessive use of force is found. So in contrast to what's happening here in Denver, where after Jesse Hernandez was killed, the police chief said, if the officer fired on her and only shot once, I would wonder why he pulled the gun. That's a very different leadership style, I think. It's incumbent on all of us to let our leadership, all the way down to the police on the street, know that pulling your gun and shooting is the last thing you should be doing. And I think, like someone else has said, that this will make our police safer, as well as our community safer. I think that's what we all want. I want to share that we're told to be patient during these investigations, that it's still being, facts are being discovered, and yet, we keep hearing in the press from members of the police community, things about the incidents that sometimes are factually correct or are definitely challenged, and that's why we have an office of the independent monitor to investigate these things. That's why I want, I'm really looking forward to seeing you guys give that office the strength that it needs.
Mr., if you can conclude your...
Sure, I'm sure you know that Denver has the second-most leasehold complete before us in the country, and I'm grateful that you're considering how to roll that back.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Phil Chrisalos. Okay. Mister, Robert Bobbey. Sylvia Gonzalez. Christopher Shado? Please, correct me, I'm sure I didn't say it right.
He said, he said, yeah. So yeah, my name is Christopher Shado, I'm aware of Denver. I just want to talk a little bit about the historical context in which all this is taking place. It takes a little bit of historical reading to know that the Ku Klux Klan had a highly influential position, you know, positions of control in Denver, going to the 1970s through the city government. And in the history of the Denver Police Department, there's never been a time in history when the Denver Police Department was not brutalizing, murdering, and otherwise abusing and harassing people of color, even when they were large protesters, et cetera. And I've heard people say this, like certain bad cops, but if there was good cops, they would be denouncing murder of Jesse Hernandez. Basically, they need these good cops to exist, but they're afraid to speak out.
Time is up.
No, it's not. We're not.
A charity is starting to grow, I have to say, and it involves other historical situations. I call for the immediate prosecution and arrest of Officer Jeffrey Monano, who has repeated opening a fire from the hospital. Throw us your doomsday.
Still, well, as my light's still green, what's up with that? We see you.
Can you run this meeting appropriately?
You just proved my point.
Maybe bring up some developers to have more time.
Where's the police unit?
Developers have eight minutes, what is that?
There's names, Montero. We just let people have their full time, that's not...
Did I hurt your feelings or something?
The cops, the community, the people that want to talk, so when people...
He has his full time.
Oh, because of three hours that we've been here.
I'd be happy to give interviews about how you cut by time on.
One more warning, and...
Hands up, don't shoot. The Denver Police Department is a murdering terrorist organization. These people are all in.
Denver's speaker is Tep Hollen. Denver, we've heard that we're Denver, and Tep Hollen.
Thank you for letting me speak. It's awesome to be here. I cannot believe we're just friends. That's incredible. I understand it's a heated time for everyone, so let's cut through the crap. Although I support this bill, all it's really calling for is more transparency, which is what most people think is already supposed to be happening, but they know it hasn't. Calling for transparency does not bring back a day. It does not prevent more uncalled-for use of deadly force, nor does it bring justice to the families. This bill is a tiny, tiny positive step, but it doesn't go far enough. I've read the whole thing through. I've read it six times. I've looked at contracts my whole life. This contract, it does very little. It doesn't, there's no direct language in this contract or in this, in this bill that allows the independent monitor to refer cases to a local or federal authority. This bill does not give the monitor its teeth at best it gives its ears. I don't understand how this, the national movement against police violence, the argument right now is being framed between knowing something and doing nothing. Lock these killer cops up, fire them, give the independent monitor the ability to fire them. When I think of what the police unions are doing right now, it reminds me of Sun Tzu's book, The Art of War, when on desperate ground attack. Jeff Tevada is on desperate ground, the police union is on desperate ground, Chief White is on desperate ground. This whole city is on desperate ground. And unless, I mean, y'all don't see what's happening in the streets. You saw what happened to the police monument. I mean, if you continue to just do nothing, it's gonna be crazy. And, I mean, I have no faith in anything the city does, but this is a tiny little thing y'all can do. Do nothing or do something, I don't care. You're the city council. We're the city council.
And I'm, it is Julie Emery.
Hello. Thank you.
I'm Reverend Alvin Gilbert. Where is he?
I am the chair and to the city council. I am the Assistant Attorney Patrick Dimmer, pastor of the Brown and Moore Community, Pastor Graham Christ, and Vice President for Political Affairs for the Greater Metro Denver Ministry of Alliance and for the Denver branch of the NAACP. I would not take the time to recurgitate the historicity of 2003 and the connection between the Greater Metro Denver Ministry of Alliance and the creation of the independent monitor's office. I'm sure you have studied that well. I would just say we want to just state that recently, we have such a barrage of situations in which our city, my city, and Denver need. We've lost a lot of money. We've lost a lot of money. It's no secret that there have been a number of settlements. There have been a continuation of lawsuits that have come because of what has been ruled and has been seen as police or sheriff misconduct. Greater than the loss of finances that have obviously hit our city is the loss of image and the loss of confidence. And I communicate that preacher, the pastors are almost by default the ones that receive a number of telephone calls every time there's a situation that occurs. It is most helpful to us when we can turn to the independent monitor's office and we can talk to the independent monitor. And he has fresh, right now, real-time words.